Okay, why don't we do quick introductions then of the panelists? And I really appreciate our guests. Senator Dembrough and Commissioner Jayapal and Kalid Thorn-Ladd for joining us today to walk through the Reimagine Oregon agenda. So I'll just start, and it's always a little tricky in the virtual environment. But if you could hand it off to someone after you've done just your introduction, that'll just help it go a little bit smoother. So I'm Andrew Scott. I'm a Portland Public Schools Board Member and this year's Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee. And welcome to everyone. And I will pass it off to Julie Abram Edwards.
Thank you, Julie Abram Edwards, Board Member and Committee Member. And I'm going to pass it off to Michelle DePass.
Hi, everyone. Michelle DePass, Board Member and just visiting tonight because it's an important topic. Thank you. Welcome to our guests.
Past Marita.
I'm so sorry. I'm passing it to Rita. I didn't follow directions very well.
Rita Moore, Board Member. And I will pass it on to Courtney.
Good evening, everybody. Courtney Westling, Director of Government Relations for PPS. I already forgot the instructions. Sorry. And I'll pass it off to Stephanie.
Good afternoon, Stephanie Soden, Executive Chief of Staff here at PPS. Welcome, everybody. And I will pass it off to Roseanne.
Roseanne Powell, Board Manager. And I'm going to pass it off to Tay.
Tay, I am the District Representative on the District Student Council for Jefferson. And I'm a Committee Member. And I pass it to Parker.
Hello, I'm Parker Myron. So I've already sort of introduced myself. I represent Benson on the District Student Council. And I'm one of the student representatives to the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. I'll pass it to Nathaniel.
I'm Nathaniel Shu. I'm the Student Representative to the Board of Education. I'm a Senior at Jefferson. And I'll pass it to David.
Good afternoon, everyone. David Roy. I am the Senior Director of Communications for the District.
Passing it to...
David, you want to pass to... How about Terry? Why don't you go ahead?
So, yes, my colleague, my communications colleague, Terry. Terry, take it away.
Kara, you want to introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Kara Bradshaw. And I'm the Executive Assistant to the Board of Education. And I will pass it to Michael Dembrough.
There, I'm Michael Dembrough. I'm the Senator for District 23. That's much of Northeast and Southeast Portland. And I chair the Senate's Committee on Education. And I will pass it on to Commissioner Jayapal.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sushila Jayapal, Multnomah County Commissioner for District 2, which is north and northeast Portland. It's everything north of I-84, starts with the St. John's neighborhood to the northwest, and then goes all the way out east, northeast 186th. And I'm very pleased to be here. And I will pass it to Kalid.
Hello, I'm Kalid Thorn-Ladd. I am Executive Director of CHIRUS-PDX. And I'm here tonight as one of a number of people that were involved in the Reimagine Oregon policy framework and the development of that. It was truly a collective of several Black Lives organizations in our community and in Oregon, I would say, that comprises Reimagine. CHIRUS is just one of them.
Great, thank you. And if I'm counting right, we've got everyone except Angela Donnelly introduced as the last panelist.
Hi, I'm Angela Donnelly. I am the Policy Director for Commissioner Jayapal.
Great. Well, thank you for joining us. So I will turn it over to our guests so we can dive into this discussion about the Reimagine Oregon agenda specifically as it relates to education and schools. And I know we, as a board, are very excited to have this conversation. So I'm not sure who to turn it over to, but take it away.
So Danny asked me to give an overview of Reimagine so everyone was on the same page around what Reimagine Oregon is. So I'm going to start there. And I wanted to start with just a reminder around the Black Lives Matter movement and that it's a movement anchored in humanity and Black humanity specifically. And for those of you who don't know, the mission of Black Lives Matter is they are a collective of liberators who believe in an inclusive and spacious movement. We believe that in order to win and bring as many people with us along the way, we must move beyond the narrow nationalism that is too prevalent in Black communities. We must ensure we are building a movement that brings all of us to the front. And I wanted to read that mission because I think in the media, the message of Black Lives Matter has often gotten lost and conflated with other things. And so the centering of Black humanity as part of the movement and an inclusive movement that involves all voices is important because Reimagine Oregon came out of the Black Lives Matter protest movement. It seeded the idea of how do we take what is happening on the ground to fight for Black lives and bring it to the policy level and to our elected leaders at the table? So in the beginning of summer, a collective of Black Ds working across several sectors came together and began to establish Reimagine Oregon. We pulled a lot from the PALF People's Plan as well as Urban League State of Black Oregon Plan. But we also, in our various areas of focus, I, of course, being part of, really sort of helping lead the education focus, decided to also look at what was happening in several different educational spaces and bringing also some policy issue areas that were being talked about already in other policy spaces. Reimagine talks about how it took over 400 years or 20,000 weeks to get to this point. But we are here. And I think we believe that through intentional action in policy, we can begin to change the narrative for Black humanity here in Oregon. We were fortunate to have a number of meetings of which Commissioner Jayapal and Senator Dembrough participated. We had the Governor, state legislative leaders, tri-county commissioners from Multnomah, Clackamas, and Washington County. And from Multnomah County, I think we had steady participation from Commissioner Jayapal, Commissioner Myron, and then the Chair, Chair Kefory. And then we had some of our city elected leaders, including Mayor Wheeler. So we had a number of conversations where we were able to really isolate what are the policy areas that we want to focus on? What's doable now? What's doable in the future? And what's doable sort of in the far future? And we're here today to really focus on these are the things that this collective group... We also, I should say, we had some of our federal delegates step in at times. Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley. And Representative Blumenhauer was also involved a little behind the scenes and being briefed and his staff being engaged in this work. So we... What I'm going to read to you today is sort of the overarching educational framework that was decided upon through this collective process. And I would say there was a lot of intentionality to think through what can we feasibly do and focus on. So it wasn't just high in the sky, pie in the sky ideas. There was also, and I think Commissioner Jayapal and Senator Dembrough can attest to that, a level of accountability. People saying, I commit to this, I commit to that. And we have things moving forward in the legislative space as well as the county space that we'll talk more about today. But high level, eliminating in-school arrests and removing SROs from schools was one item in the education space. Diversification and retention of the educator workforce. Wage parity for early childhood providers. Recognizing that many of our early learning caregivers are women of color. Creating a list of culturally responsive and racially responsible contractors. Recognizing the role of CBOs in education and the fact that very few contractors coming out of the Department of Education are representative of the communities that are served with children. Ending zero tolerance policies. Ensuring and expanding affordable quality childcare. Doing a study on expulsions as suspensions in pre-K specifically. And ensuring all professionals throughout pre-K through grade 12 are getting trained in restorative practice and restorative justice. And that's where we'll spend the bulk of the time today. And then also looking at how we support organizations and charters that are serving predominantly kids of color. Of course, there's only two in the state that do so. But... And Portland has sort of been ahead of the curve of doing that with CHIRUS. And then, but we're looking at it from a statewide perspective. And then all Oregon districts supporting some of the Educational Advancement Council's initiatives and ensuring we have ethnic studies and that curriculum that is representative, again, that is telling the narrative that is untold around students of color. Is it accessible to schools throughout the state of Oregon? And that we are training our teachers to be able to deliver that curriculum. The final thing, and I would say probably the most controversial perhaps, is a conversation around state school fund dollars and the weights, both for poverty and race, and how we're ensuring that we're... That the dollars that are serving our most underserved children are actually getting to them. Recognizing that we've had an achievement gap that hasn't budge throughout the state of Oregon for many decades and that we have not looked at the state school funding formula since the 70s to really determine whether this distribution formula is the right formula to ensure that we're helping our children who are most vulnerable. So, and that's a big item. Reimagine Oregon has this on their list, but we're not the only people with that on the list. And in fact, the Racial Justice Council that the Governor put together, the Education Committee of that, has talked a lot about this particular piece. So those are the Reimagine Oregon areas. I wanted to also bring up, because Reimagine is not just focused on education, there are other things such as legislative process. There was an ask for racial impact statements and community advisory boards for all legislative processes. That's just something worth noting because I think that's a governance issue. And as a school board who governs, it might be something that we would think about in education as well. But it was framed under the larger legislative process umbrella. There was like seven different policy area buckets. So with that, I would like to turn it over. I don't know if I should... I can't remember who goes next. So Senator Dembrough or Commissioner Jayapal, whoever wants to go next.
I think it's Senator Dembrough. I'm nominating you, Senator.
Okay, thank you, Sushila. We were just in a meeting. Commissioner Jayapal and I were... She was the Chair. So I'm still in obedience mode. Whatever you tell me to do, Commissioner. I think Kalid really framed it up very well. You know, there are, you know, many of us in the legislature who definitely heard the calls for justice that were being made out in the street. And everyone was terrified that there would be a temporary listening to people's demands, to people's needs, to people's expectations. And then, you know, as the months wore on, it would just kind of fade away. And once again, we would have to start a lot of this work from scratch. And so I'm very appreciative of what the people who organized Reimagine Oregon really appreciate. They're creating that framework to make it possible for us to really move forward in a structured way. And I say that because there are at least a half a dozen bills that will come before the legislature, probably as many as 10, coming out of the specific recommendations that Kalid mentioned. And that, you know, in addition to that, a number of other pieces of legislation coming out of other areas, judiciary, prison reform, access to healthcare, et cetera. You know, the 10 or so are just related to education. And I have a whole list that I can send out after the meeting. If you tell me who I should send it to, Courtney, I can certainly send it to you and you can distribute it with the specific legislative concepts that are going to be introduced. Most of them will be committee bills coming out of the Senate Education Committee. One or two, I think, will be coming out of the House Education Committee. And then some will be personal bills. There's one directly related to restorative practice that Senator Lou Frederick and I are cosponsoring. Those will be personal bills. And on the issue of restorative practice, just next week, Monday morning, the Senate Education Committee will be meeting in public session. And we're going to have a presentation on restorative practices in Colorado schools that many of you may be interested in. There's a colleague of mine in Colorado, Pete Lee, Senator Pete Lee, who has been very active in moving their practice away from school resource officers and disciplinary practices that create a school-to-prison pipeline, replacing that with true restorative practice. So he'll be there with us to talk about the process that they went through. And then they have actually created a statewide Restorative Justice Council. And the Executive Director of that council is going to be with us as well Monday morning, as will someone from the Jefferson County Public School District, their manager of student discipline, who's also a member of the Colorado Restorative Justice Council, to talk about the changes that they have made in their practice, which I think will be very helpful for us. I'll just mention a couple of other pieces of legislation that I think will be of particular interest to Portland Public Schools. One is, as you may know, a couple of sessions ago, the legislature passed a statute requiring the creation of an ethnic studies curriculum to replace our current multicultural curriculum. And the work on that new ethnic studies/anti-racist/anti-racism curriculum is being finalized right now. It is going to be presented to the State Board of Education for final approval sometime this year. And I will say that they were doing pretty good work before the pandemic. It kind of went into a hiatus during the pandemic, as so much has. But they... Once the events, the racial justice demands began in the spring, they went back hard to work. And I think they've done really good work. The challenge that we face, though, is that whenever you change state standards, some of you may know this, it's a very long process. Districts are... Districts want to have a very long transition period before they move from one standard to another. So this new, I think, very relevant and, you know, high-quality anti-racism curriculum won't be mandatory in the schools until the 2025-26 academic year, which, you know, is, from my perspective, really too long to wait. And so I'm working on ways to allow districts to opt in early if they feel they can, you know, do the curriculum development, the textbook selection, and, yeah, the professional development that's necessary. We do have a bill that is giving the Educator Advancement Council money to do curriculum development around ethnic studies. You know, I don't know how it's going to do from a funding perspective, but I think it's really important. And I will say, you know, just in closing, that, you know, a real priority for many of us is diversifying our educator workforce. And you will see legislative action around that. At this point, a lot of it is just kind of placeholder. We're not yet at the point of having concrete proposals. But it's a real priority for me. I think it's a real priority for many of us. And I just want to say I'm really open to any advice, any proposals, any, yeah, any participation that you'd like to give. So I'll end it there. I'm open, you know, for any questions, of course.
Maybe I'll go ahead and jump in and just add a little bit about the county's participation in Reimagine Oregon. You know, we, as Kalid mentioned, we have been participating in it from the beginning. And I want to echo Senator Dembrough's appreciation of the work that this group has done. It really has been a phenomenal effort and body of work. And I, too, think that the structure that Reimagine Oregon has set up allows us to make sure that the work lasts beyond a couple of months, you know, even half a year, even a year. And that accountability piece that Kalid talked about, that was very intentional. And I think that's really important. And so I'll give, you know, I'll let you just sort of lay out what that looked like. Reimagine Oregon had created this very broad and comprehensive set of policy agendas. And each of us, as representing our jurisdictions, committed to pieces of that agenda and committed to timeframes within which we would try to move that agenda forward. And at each successive meeting, we reported back on how that was going. And I imagine that that's going to continue. The meeting frequency has slowed down, but it's going to continue. And that was a really important sort of collective commitment. We all listened to each other make those commitments. And so it was sort of a collective, community commitment to this incredibly important agenda. As Kalid mentioned, the Chair, Sharon Myron, and myself were at each of the meetings. We started and committed early because, I think, as is true with the district, we really saw the see this work as so completely aligned with work that we were and are already doing around racial justice and racial equity. And at the same time, it gave all of the rest of that work, whether or not directly related to education or any of the policy items, an extra sense of urgency and impetus that I think allows those of us who are advocating for it to do that with renewed energy and renewed success. So we have seen it all along as part of our mission, completely aligned with our mission, vision, and values. It fits into work that we're doing that's not necessarily education-related, but I think that work provides a scaffolding. So I just want to touch on a couple of pieces of that sort of background work. And that is work around our Workforce Equity Strategic Plan. It's work around our COVID response, which has been very intentional from the beginning to focus on racial equity, leading with race. And then reimagining our public safety system. And this is a place where there's a lot of crossover, obviously, between the work of Reimagine Oregon and what we're doing at the county. So that's some of the scaffolding. And then, you know, I think why I'm here at this meeting today is because of the alignment with the education agenda and with our strong desire and commitment to partner with PPS and with other districts on the broader education agenda, including the pieces that Senator Dembrough talked about. But then more specifically around the restorative practice and restorative justice component of the agenda. Again, that was something that we committed to early. You know, I think that we are in alignment around our commitment to those practices. I know that there's a lot of work already happening at PPS around those practices. There's some work happening at the county. And we really see this effort as a way to work together, to align, to build, and to partner around embedding restorative practice and restorative justice in both our systems. So that's that. Again, that's why I'm here at this meeting today. It's just to say we are so... We are completely committed to Reimagine Oregon. And we're very committed to this restorative practice piece. And the particular place where I think we all realize that happens is our sun school services. The fact that we work with PPS and other districts on those sun school services. We have shared service partners. And so when we talk about embedding practices in those shared service partners, it makes complete sense to be working together to do that. So that's my quick summary of the county's role, both in the overall project and in the work that's the education-related work.
Thank you so much, guests, for speaking. And Kalid, I know you touched on this, but you did mention that the two plans that have kind of gone into the creation of Reimagine Oregon are the Urban League's 2015 State of Black Oregon. And the other plan is...
The PALF People's Plan.
The PALF People's Plan, which both had policy demands, have both been published. And so the idea was like, the community has already spoken in terms of what is needed. And what's great about the Reimagine Oregon plan is that it has assigned jurisdictional accountability, where the other plans, I think, didn't do that. And so it was harder to resource those demands. I really like that we've been assigned, as Portland Public Schools, some accountability. The city of Portland and Multnomah County and at the state level is fantastic. I also want to say I'm really happy to see that the city was assigned a piece of accountability because right now, they don't currently have someone that's involved with education issues. But that could be a really interesting piece to include. And the city should be vested in the inputs that are going to our system and the outputs in the students that we turn out. And so I'm hoping that as a result of this work, that we can see some kind of renewed commitment, new commitment to focusing on, you know, pre-K all the way through college, commitment to getting our community members, especially those marginalized community members, educated. So thank you very much.
Director Scott, if I may? Please, please do, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. I didn't get a chance to say that. I was stuck in the holding tank. But I did hear your whole intro, Kalid. So I appreciated the context and the setup here on arriving at a really well-organized set of priorities that are hard not to get behind. And I'm glad that we're starting to make some inroads there. And certainly, SIA funds have assisted us with placing a bigger focus on social emotional supports and cultural responsiveness. And our bond will certainly provide for the kind of refreshed curriculum. We're excited about our ethnic studies work. And we hope to be a real leader in the state on that. And but we have a journey ahead of us in doing this. Senator Dembrough, I appreciate you sort of lending your support to educator equity. I was studying the 2020 Educator Advancement Council's Educator Equity Report last night. And once again, what stands out very obviously is, and I know everybody knows this, our teaching force doesn't come anywhere near close of being representative of the demographic that we're serving. And I think a lot of the relationships between our adults and students and the cultural responsiveness and all the rest can help be alleviated when there's people of color, educators of color, leaders of color. And there's a massive gap there. So the workforce diversity efforts, the grow-your-own-programming, the alternative pathways. And I know we're in constant conversations with the higher eds, with TSBC, with ODE. And there's a lot of interest in making sure that we're supporting and incentivizing talented, prospective educators to join the ranks because our students really do need to see their presence in all of our schools and not just our students of color. So I appreciate the prospectus here. I think it's an important one. It is fundamentally about better understanding our community, our students and our families. So we're not causing harm and we can minimize the need for restorative justice and are thinking about what a meaningful relationship, you know, looks like with our diverse communities of colors. Hearing a little bit more about how this agenda's emerged.
Chair Scott?
Please, go ahead.
First, I want to thank all the panelists for coming today and sharing your work. And when I listen to the agenda and then look through the proposals that have been outlined, I see a lot of alignment with the values and the mission of... And the strategic planning that has happened at PPS. And so I think it is only natural for us to look at, when you look at the education proposals that are part of it, and see how we can work together. So the question for you all is, do you have a specific ask of the district as we head into the legislative session? Or a way in which we can effectively partner with you on the education items and the agenda? And that's where at least the legislative proposals. And then I'm interested, Sushila... And that that's where at least the legislative proposals. And then I'm interested, Sushila, in terms of the sun schools and the work there, where you see the integration and alignment happening between, in this case, PPS and the county?
Do Kalii or Senator Dembrough, do you want to start with the legislative piece first, and then we'll narrow it down?
Yeah, I'm happy to start. You know, we could certainly use your help with your colleagues in the School Boards Association and COSA, the Coalition of School Administrators. It is true that a lot of what's being proposed here, PPS is, is to some extent already doing, could do more, definitely. But there will be some resistance from other districts about what we're proposing. You know, just, I mentioned the challenge of shifting to a new curriculum, right, which this ethnic studies curriculum, while, you know, I think it's obviously, I think every, all of us here would agree is extremely important. In some parts of the state, it's seen as unnecessary and just another another piece of work that they have to go through. And they're just getting used to the current standards. They don't want to have to change. And so you know, your help with your colleagues there, I think, would be very useful. And and also as well, you know, considering if we can figure out ways to have you be early adopters of the new standard, you know, I think that would be great, you know, to use the district almost as a pilot. And to do some of the early curriculum development work around it, I think would be very helpful. And some professional development models, even. So those are things that come immediately to mind.
I would just add, I there are, as Senator Dembrough mentioned, Representative Alonzo Leon has a few bills, as well as Speaker Kotek. And so just keeping abreast of what's happening, I think all of the associations, including OEA, and having just support for these is important. I think hearing from teachers and administrators within PPS and and understanding why equity and diversity is important, I think, to the Senator's point, some of this does challenge status quo. And the more voices we have from educators, the the better. And I think there's obviously a lot of community members that support it, but hearing from the education, the teachers and the teachers aides and you know, the people that are willing to speak, I think, will be very important.
So in terms of the more specific restorative justice, restorative practice piece, you know, I think what I would say is it, the conversation is at a really early stage. So we have pulled together a small group. It's been Michael and Kalii, Danny, myself and Michelle, to start thinking about what a partnership around restorative justice and restorative practice looks like, with the understanding, all of us, that this isn't something that you simply mandate and plop into a context. So what we've very nascently talked about is starting with some sort of shared learning about what, what effective restorative practice looks like for our kids in our schools and in others, our other systems. And I'll mention that for the county, where, you know, there are other, other places in which we serve young people. And so juvenile justice is another place. It's the other end of the pipeline that we want to, that we want to break. And and so as we're thinking about it, we're thinking about it in that sense as well. So I would say in terms of the ask for tonight, it's really just an introduction of the concept. And then, and then to ask for your, your shared commitment and you know, interest in in participating and in moving this forward.
If I can just add one more thing, I didn't mention this, it may be obvious, but the the focus on the educational piece within Reimagine really was about the pipeline to prison. And the Commissioner mentioning that, it just reminded me, that is, that is what all of the policies were about. How do we end the pipeline to prison for our youth? And so I also happen to have had, it was more of an early learning briefing with the Governor prior to this call. But we talked about the K-12 budget. I know that there are dollars for just anti-racism work, professional development. And so we're working with her to try to have more language around restorative practice specifically in the dollars that she has set aside for racial equity work. You know, this is the Governor's first pass of the budget, things change, but we're trying to be consistent in the language we use. And we, at Reimagine, have worked with sort of the Chuck Board and Stand advocacy group, who has a similar set, but not the same set of policy objectives. And both Amanda and I have testified, Amanda from Chuck Board and I have testified before the Senate and House Ed Committees, so that there is alignment between what you see in policy and advocacy work here in our community.
Can I ask a question? As I've been listening, it occurs to me that there are there is some work, some related work that's going on. And I'm wondering if if anybody has reached out to either MESD, which is coordinating, it's, it's a relatively new effort to coordinate diversity, equity, and inclusion practices across school districts within Multnomah County. So it's not just PPS, it, it covers all of the the districts in the county. And the other, the other thing is the Regional Educator Network, which is focused on, it's in Multnomah County in Clackamas. And it's focused on trying to develop mechanisms to diversify the educated workforce. So I'm wondering if, if there's been any effort to reach out to those two groups yet? I mean, I'm sure you're reaching out to all kinds of people and
Not yet.
There's always more phone calls to make. But I'm just wondering, because we have contacts within those two groups. So if you haven't already reached out, I mean, maybe we could serve as a conduit.
Yeah, I think that would be great, Rita. You know, I've been working with the sort of statewide Educator Advancement Council, of which this, you know, the local network, that they have these local networks that are, you know, that are part of that. But I haven't actually, you know, spoken to people doing the work on the ground. And I think that would be very helpful.
I agree.
And and with the MESD, yeah, actually, I just got off a call that they're, they, they just had a a meeting having to do with childcare and diversity challenges in childcare, which Kalii maybe should have been part of, except the part that that she would have appeared on is happening right now, sort of, you know, at the tail end. But yes, no, very important. And, you know, I know MESD is also involved in the youth prison program, you know, the Donald Lee Long educating there. They're having a lot of problems there, I have to say, and that we're trying to get resolved. But obviously, the ultimate solution is to keep kids out of Donald Lee Long to the extent possible. And that's what a lot of this work is all about.
So if I can just follow up a bit, so I am, I am a delegate to both of those groups that I mentioned. So I would be happy to to serve as a kind of liaison. In order for me to do that effectively, it would be helpful to know what it is, like, what's the ask? And what's the information that I should be you know, liaising on? So anyway, if I could connect with somebody, I don't know, maybe Sushila? If, if I could get some direction about what I could usefully do to advance the cause, it would be helpful.
Sure. Yes, would be happy to talk about that. I mean, you know, I think in terms of the restorative justice, restorative practice piece, what we've talked about in our little group is basically this conversation, who else needs to be part of that discussion? And given MESD's connection with, again, both sides of the pipeline, I think it makes complete sense for them to be involved. I think with respect to legislative pieces, probably Senator Dembrough is your, is your contact. I don't, I don't, right, Michael?
Yeah, I would definitely like to talk to you, Rita, about the diversifying the workforce effort.
So one of the most exciting things, I think, about the Reimagine Oregon agenda is the accountability, which, which all of you have mentioned. And you know, I know, I know through my day job, there were some of those early meetings where elected officials were invited and, and there was, and tasked with, with, with making progress on this. It's had a real impact. And and I know, you know, at Metro, as a result of that, we've formed, you know, internal working groups, right, to sort of look at the items that Metro was tasked with. And 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 it's becoming embedded in, in sort of the structure of our, of our operational work, that it's that that accountability, the timeline, the outcomes, right? When are we going to achieve things? It also frankly empowered a lot of our black employees to come forward with their own list of ways to sort of reimagine Oregon or reimagine Metro. And and there's a synergy there, which has been kind of exciting to watch, right, as, as, as this, this community-led effort has has sort of spread in a really positive way. On the one hand, I'm always reluctant, you know, to, to, to task the district with, with more work. There's a lot going on in pandemic and distance learning, et cetera. But but I also know that, getting back to what you all said, the, the way we make progress is by holding people accountable, right? It's by setting very concrete outcomes and goals and timelines, and then having that follow up. So it's not just a, it would be really great to work on this when we get around to it. It's a, no, 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 we really want to see something within one month or six months or, or, or a year. And I guess I'm putting this out there. I don't, I don't have an endpoint for this comment, but it's more of a question of what can we do as a school board to, to bring some of that same, some of that same accountability and timelines that I think you've successfully done with other local governments, right? And and I appreciate the fact that, that PPS, you know, really is leading on a lot of these things. But as the Superintendent, I know, would agree, there's, there's still much more we can do. And and I think we want to be pushing the envelope on this. And we want to be a district that's out there really leading. And so I, I'm just, I'm thinking about ways that, that we can set for ourselves, working with you. What are some of those concrete goals? What are some of the timelines? And then hopefully that, that, that continues to become part of our overall culture as, as well, moving forward.
I would like to take it back to the committee. I don't have something at the ready. You know, education's a lot different in that there are so many players. And when we had talked about, we did have a conversation about, do we have school boards at the meetings? But because we're a tri-county thing that involves many school boards, many people, and it was a very tedious task of like, literally going through each item and people saying what they were going to do. So education has so much more breadth, I think, to it than some of the other areas. I would like to, and that's why it made sense to start with a large district. I think Michelle sort of stepped up and said, how can we do something at PPS? And so we don't have all the districts that we've talked to in the same way. But I think we can be thoughtful. I just, because it's a collective effort, I don't want to say, you should do this, and then talk to some of my colleagues. And they're like, oh. So I'd like to bring that back. I think this conversation, for me, was framed as just an overview and a first conversation. And then I think there are future conversations to be had where we get down to details like timelines.
Great.
And I appreciate you asking, too.
Well, and and I think that, yeah, let, let, let's make sure we continue that conversation. And and I think you've got a very supportive board. I know you have a very supportive Superintendent and leadership. And so I think we want to do what we can to do our part and really, really be pushing this forward. So final comments, either from, from committee members or our guests? Director Brem Edwards, did you have something?
I did. I'm wondering if in the discussion there whether there is any discussion about the concept of mandates, which often in a state that has historically been local control, that sometimes to make fundamental changes to the status quo, the state has had to mandate things. And I'm wondering if there was a point of view among the committee about how to move pieces of a broader agenda forward that may be contrary to, you know, or dislodging the status quo?
Yeah, there are many conversations.
Maybe a flavor, like that here's a place where we, you know, are supportive, or here's where we're not, or
I don't know if I understand the question. So you're saying what were the?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the, the context, because they're definitely among many school board members and OSBA of, we, we don't want mandates from the state about how, because we're a state that values local controls of, of school districts, whether it's curriculum or, you know, how you provide, you know, safe schools or, you know, a whole host of issues that look that usually has been decided by the local school board. So I'm just interested in if there was a discussion about that and what at a high level?
Senator Dembrough?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think, Julia, you know well that issues like this become, you know, really subjects of debate in the legislature, you know, and part of the political push-pull, definitely. And and this issue, in addition, will take on the cast of an urban versus rural, you know, kind of, it'll take on that flavor. There will be people who don't want, you know, they don't want mandates. And they will say that this is something coming from the urban districts, because that's where the people of color are. And, and you're forcing us to put curriculum about racism. But we don't have, you know, we don't have people of color here, and so it's not an issue for us. So why are you telling us what we have to be teaching? And, you know, that is, you know, from my perspective, wrong on so many levels, including the fact that many of those districts have substantial numbers of children of color in their, among their students. And but that will be definitely part of the debate. And it will, a lot of it will get couched in that language of no unfunded mandates, or even if they're funded, we don't want them. No, it should not be a top-down decision. And I think, you know, especially right now, you see it happening in terms of people's reaction to COVID response, you know, COVID action. I mean, this is something we do need to be prepared for. And so I think, I think it's really important that you raised it, Julia, because it needs to be front and center in our planning for what this work is going to be like.
If I can just underline this point, today and tomorrow is happening, the Oregon School Law Conference. So I was in a session this morning with my fellow superintendents and attorneys from school districts across the state. And a big topic of the conversation was exactly what you're describing, Senator Dembrough, is folks are finding it problematic or difficult to adopt a very outward facing statement around racial equity, around ethnic studies, around prioritizing workforce diversity around. And so it's disheartening, it's a little alarming in 2020 that we're still having to debate it. Or, or the place that Black Lives Matter has in public education. So it's, it's definitely the reality. And so to Director Brem Edwards' point is, you know, how do we, how do we address and confront that? What role do we play at a minimum, demonstrating what it can look like and how it better serves a diverse student population? But how do we help our colleagues along?
Yeah, and, and, and that really is the key. You know, I think we have, just, just looking at sort of raw politics, we probably have the votes to pass a lot of this legislation. I think, you know, just looking at my colleagues who are in the majority, they're very sympathetic to the goals of Reimagine Oregon. But again, if, you know, if the minority, in this case, the But again, if, you know, if the minority, in this case, the political minority, you know, feel that this is being shoved down boots, as it were, it's not going to be successful in the long run. And so we really have to figure out, yeah, how to talk about this, how to put it out there, you know, in a way that, you know, where we're using data, for example, you know, to show disparate impacts. This is not just rhetoric. This is, you know, the, you know, the data supports the need, these changes. That, just as an example of, you know, having to figure out just how to talk about this and how to, because ultimately, the question becomes, what does success look like here? And success can't just be passing a bill. It's got to be more than that.
And I think that, you know, I will send the list of policy issue areas, so you can have it in front of you, because it's a lot more detailed than what you see on the website. And there is an amalgam of areas where we're asking for a mandate versus, you know, just a policy adjustment. I think the zero tolerance and the eliminating in school arrests, those are more of the mandates that are out there. And I know that Senator Dembrough and I were talking earlier about the fact that the removal of SROs is a mandate that we're asking for, that not every district feels should be a mandate. Some people really like their SROs. So there is a handful, but it's not every demand. It really varies. I would say that the teacher, there is, there will be a bill focused on retaining teachers of color during contract negotiations. And there is support from some of the associations on this. So I don't know, I don't know that it would be, I don't know if it's framed as a mandate. I would assume it is. It's, we're essentially saying, when you're making decisions about layoffs, you need to prioritize our teachers of color, not just seniority. But I don't know, you know, that would be controversial as well. But as I said, there's a lot of people behind, not just reimagine, but there are other advocacy groups focused on some of these areas. So it's, I think it's more broad-based than one might think.
I just want to remind everybody here that, you know, this is the good trouble that we should be getting into. Had advocates not pushed for change from the status quo, you know, women wouldn't be, have won the right to vote, you know, Black people wouldn't have had won the right to vote, you know? I'm sure that made lawyers nervous, and it disrupted the status quo, and here we are. So I do appreciate Senator Dembrough, your framing of, you know, bringing this rural-urban divide. I think it's important how we talk about these things. We want to get as much buy-in as possible. You know, I'm willing to do that nuanced work in terms of talking about this. But we do, I feel, we do need to stay strong and steady in terms of our asks. And it's really great to know that people on the call are kind of all pulling in the same direction.
Thanks, Director DePass.
From watching the, for several decades, watching the legislature, I find that those things that stick and that are sustainable and that have widespread enduring impact are those in which you don't often, you don't win it on a strictly partisan vote. So winning the hearts and minds of either sort of, whether it's rural and urban, or by a bipartisan way, just creates better, better-lasting change. I think it's a worthy goal, not just to win it with the margin that you already have, but also, I think, the opportunity to speak to those that may initially be not supportive and bring them along creates a better, a better change. Thanks for the insights, the discussions.
I wanted to ask quickly if any of our student representatives had any thoughts or feedback, Deva or Orte or Nathaniel or Parker?
I'd just like to say that, from a student perspective, hearing these goals really concretely laid out and seeing the push is, it's inspiring. And I think it's something that particularly the students of color in PPS will really value. You know, retaining teachers of color, that's a point that's brought up again and again, as something of the utmost importance. And really seeing yourself mirrored in any leadership position is really of the utmost importance. And I think that, you know, the goals prioritized in Reimagine Oregon are really in line with the values and with the hope that we have moving forward. But I don't have any specific questions, but thanks for coming and giving us this update or this insight. And I look forward to possibly working with it in the future and in seeing what happens. Thank you.
Chair Scott, I actually have to go to a 5:30 meeting.
Yes, thank you. No, and let me just, I'll just wrap up. Thanks again for listening tonight. And you're welcome back to this committee anytime that you need to have further conversations. And I did want to let you know, if you didn't, we are taking a step tonight, small one, but I think important, as part of our legislative agenda for PPS. One of our, one of our agenda, or one of our items on that agenda is, PPS will support and advocate for the Reimagine Oregon Educational Policy Agenda. So that'll go to the board in a couple of weeks for formal adoption. So I'm excited about that. So we are going to transition into that. Our guests are welcome to stay. If you want to listen to the conversation about our legislative agenda, but I understand you may have other things to do as well. So thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ash. Nice to see you.
So, yeah, more to come on that conversation, because it's a really important one. And I think there's lots for the district to do. And I think that is a good transition into our legislative agenda, which is some of the things we just talked about and some of those principles. We've discussed this legislative agenda in draft form, and Courtney provided it a while back, at least, I think, a week or two ago, to folks to take sort of a final look at what our goal today is, just any final questions, you know, or concerns about our legislative agenda. And then this committee will take a vote to recommend to the board adoption of this legislative agenda. It is scheduled to come back at our next board meeting. I am actually going to have one suggested change, but, well, I'll go ahead and throw that out there and then open it up to other board members. Courtney, did you have anything before I chime in?
Yeah, so two things. One is, I clarified the, this, sorry, all my acronyms are muddled right now. State School Fund, not Student Success Act. I clarified the number I went into the document. I talked to Claire about the advocacy number that she's been working on with OASBO. Obviously, the governor's budget has $9.1 billion for the state school fund, which we know is not enough, and she has publicly admitted to that. But, and that has a lot to do with a lot of things. But the OASBO Claire number is 9.7. So that's the number I am putting in our agenda, if that's okay with you. And that is a, you know, it's a big number, but we have to, we have to set our expectations high. And I think that's the way to do it. Oh, and I had one other thing. In the draft that you have, the second draft, kind of closer to final draft, Rita had suggested some language on I-5. And I just wanted to maybe discuss that a little bit. I like it, but I'm concerned that we don't want to overpromise what we're capable of in the legislature with, you know, we can't, and we can't stop the I-5 project, but we can come up with ways to advocate to make it work better for our school. And so I just want to maybe clarify that language.
Okay. Courtney, do we have that language?
It's in the document that Roseanne shared.
Is it the one that's posted?
The one that's in Wordbooks?
Should be.
What?
Not in the one that was posted.
Okay. Well, I can tell you it. And we can, I can also email it around. I wonder, Roseanne, if maybe because it was an ad, it didn't get included because it wasn't accepted. Is that probably what happened? That's my guess. It's nobody's fault. I'm sorry. I should have accepted it into the final.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just...
So, sorry, Courtney, I thought you were done. Go ahead.
I was just going to suggest I could email that language to you real quick.
Yeah, maybe email it and drop it in the chat.
We're not allowed to chat.
I don't think we have a chat.
Or put it up on the screen, or some...
People send it, send it around and copy Cara and myself, and we'll get it loaded.
Is it something standalone, like a standalone bullet, Courtney, or is it embedded in, is it to be embedded in something?
It's, I can pull it out as a standalone bullet for you all to review. I can also send the working document that I have. What I've been leery of doing is sharing the working documents so that we're all in there. I don't think that's a good way to finalize this. And that's no offense to anyone. I just, we might be here all night, because we'll all want to get in there. So I'll send it, I'll send it around. Please don't do that. And I'll share the bullet separately.
Courtney, are you suggesting that, just back to the funding, that in that first bullet point, under Funding System Ships, that we would advocate for a $9.7 billion investment?
That is what, so his...
What is, what is that percentage increase?
I don't know the percentage increase. I haven't done that math yet. And I don't actually think that part's that important. I was actually going to suggest we take that part out. But the 9.7 is the, this is the biannual conversation that happens among state business officers, or school business officers, where they have to kind of come up with the real current service level number. That's never the same as what the governor puts forward because of LFO's decision to always mess up the 51-49 split. So, and I'm editorializing, because many of you have, and I think it's a known problem. The OASBO folks that Claire is a part of, they go through this exercise every time we see a governor's budget to come up with that number. And her number is 9.7, their number is 9.7. So I suggest that we include that, we go big. I don't think we're going to, I'm going to be honest, I don't think we're going to get to 9.7 unless, you know, we get a lot of federal help and there's a way to, you know, we can manage to get to that number. But I think, you know, if we don't, if we don't put it high, we won't come close, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess, it'd be interesting, how big of an increase is that? And then looking at the trend line, because it seems like we just had a major investment through the Student Success Act. And so it's like, what is that number based on? Is that individual roll, district roll-ups? And that's, you know, based on, you know, decisions that were made about salary and benefits? Or is it, is it based on something else? I guess, I'm just concerned, like, being able to rational, I guess I'm interested in being able to rationalize what that, that number. So if you're telling legislators, "Yeah, we need 9.7."
Julia, just really quickly, I mean, maybe, maybe one of, I mean, I guess my question would be, if tying it to the OASBO number seems like it makes sense, because again, there's a group that's done the thinking around that to sort of put it in. If we aren't going to tie it to that, I would question what we would tie it to, right? What an alternative number would be. So, I mean, I would be comfortable if that is the number that sort of, sort of came out of that group.
And if anything changes between now and the full board vote on this, I'll make sure you know. I just got that number from Claire this afternoon. So it's possible that it could change, but I don't think that it will. But I don't want to say that it's final, final, because I haven't seen anything formally happen.
Yeah, Courtney, what would be helpful between now and the, when the board acts on it, is to get whatever the background, informations, that, because the typical pushback sometimes is like, you know, what is that based on? That's just an artificial number. It never goes down. It's always increasing. You guys just got the Student Success Act funding. So, you know, being able to anchor it in data or whatever, whatever their structure or formula was that led them to that number would be super helpful to have visibility to.
Yeah, I'll definitely get you the rationale and the data behind it as soon as I can get it from Claire and Angie Peterman at the, at OASBO.
So can I ask a question? How much of that is, how much of the discrepancy is grounded in the current methodology to determine the current service level? And maybe we can, I mean, if that accounts for a lot of it, then maybe instead of coming up with a dollar figure, maybe we want to include an item that we will advocate for a revision of the methodology to arrive at the CSL.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know the answer, Rita, but I can find out from all those folks.
Chair Scott?
Yes, go ahead.
Two other, one is just a small wording piece. Of course, I like to see the rose quarter. But in the school reopening, comprehensive distance learning, the third bullet, it talks about, "PPS supports measures that alleviate the childcare burden on families." And I think I know what that means, but I don't actually think that we, that somehow with the way it's phrased, I don't think it's explicit, like, what are we asking the legislature to do? What implications does that have? Just, it's, to me, it's vague. And then I had one other, just, and I just lost the document. I have one other place, and just relevant to the discussion we were just having with our guests, there is a bullet that talks about, "PPS opposes budgetary carve-outs for mandated uses and unfunded mandates." And I would recommend we strike, we strike that, because I think we're going to be selective in the things that we, the mandates that we oppose or support. And we have lots of budgetary carve-outs. Some are good, some are bad.
Right, that, okay, that's at the bottom of page one.
Yeah, and I think that was a carryover from last time. So there's not a new rationale for including that. It was a carryover.
And then, do we have the, the language on the rose quarter get circulated?
Yeah, Courtney has sent the document around. So maybe if folks could open that and we can look at that. Really quickly, before we move on...
It's updated in the Board Materials book.
It's also updated, okay. Before we move on to that, though, let's have some discussion about these. I want to, I want to sort of discuss each one as we go. So I think the funding number, we're going to get some background information around the rationale and that. The childcare bullet, there's a question of, is there more definition we could put around that, or more specifics?
Yeah, we can. So one of the things that's been percolating lately, and I think Senator Dembrough alluded to a childcare meeting that MESD hosted earlier, and I was on it as long as I could be. But the issue that I've been hearing a lot about is, through Nancy and Emily, is around the ERDC and the way that that subsidy is approved for families, and that there are some problems under the, under the current scenario, where we have underemployed families or unemployed parents who can't qualify for ERDC under the employment rules of that funding. And so they get nothing. And so we are under-enrolled in our childcare slots, for example, right now. Our PPS slots that we have made available are not full. And a lot of it is because there's no ERDC. Some families that maybe under normal, under, when we're not in COVID, might have qualified, but because of some of the circumstances around the pandemic, they now are being denied. And so it's pretty technical. And that was kind of what was on my mind when I included that. And I didn't go into great detail, because I wanted to keep it broad in case there were other childcare-related items. But that's one in particular. And I'm not sure yet if it has a legislative solution, or if it's going to be something that we can do at an administrative level. But I didn't want to lose sight of it, because I think it's important, since we are, you know, you would think that if we have only 300 slots available for childcare in our system, that they would be full, because parents are pretty desperate. So I just wanted to raise that. It's a tricky one. And it doesn't just affect us, although we have the Childcare Initiative through the Portland Children's Lobby that makes up for some families' subsidies. So they, if they are getting ERDC, and then they get the Childcare Initiative... and then they get the childcare initiative, they're, they're made whole and they can, they can do it. But with one or the other, some families can't afford the difference. And then with none, they're, you know, trying to support their kids' distance learning, try to look for a job, you know, all at the same time, which is untenable.
So I'm, I'm supportive generally of doing something around here or having a a line item on, on childcare. I just, I think what a legislator would ask is like, so how does this translate into what I'm doing? So if there's some way, Courtney, that we can translate the issue, issue that you presented into what is the legislative action that we're asking for? Would be helpful because it otherwise is like, is it access? Is it more slots? Is it the cost? But if we have something specific, it would be great to have it defined in what the legislative action is.
Yeah. And apologies for not doing that sooner. I, I put it in as a placeholder earlier on and then I didn't go back and, and make it more specific. So I can do that.
Okay. So we'll add a little bit more language there. And then does everyone have the revised version? There's a bullet, oh wait, I had it. Oh no, sorry. Now see, I'm in the wrong version.
Oh, do you want me to read it while you catch?
Yeah, yep, go ahead.
Okay. So the language that Rita added and Rita, I'm, I'm very happy that you added it. I just want to make sure we were saying it the right way. PPS will advocate, whoops, I lost it. There we go. PPS will advocate for revisions to ODOT's Rose Quarter Expansion Plans to Protect Student Safety and Respond to the Albina Community's Restorative Vision.
Yeah, I'm really glad Rita, you raised this. I would have just a slight, I don't know, people are looking at the document, this is a, okay, but the language that we potentially had asked the Executive Steering Committee to adopt was, you know, air quality on the grounds of Harriet Tubman Middle School and the adjacent levels of Albina Park is at a level that medical and health professionals find is safe for children and youth. So there's probably just a few words we could add to Rita's language that sets a sort of help air quality, health standard. Because what ODOT will say is their project could make a improved air quality, but it, but the reality is it's an immaterial amount.
Julia, do you think that's captured by the student safety and student broad? Or you think there's value in having something more specific?
I'm thinking there's just another clause right after student safety that says something like enhance air quality. Pardon?
Metrics? Or do we want to?
I, I think it's, I think air quality is a subset of student safety. And I think as the proposal shifts, there might be other ways where we may consider that student safety could be compromised. And I think we, we can keep it broad.
Well, I think we can say student safety and the comma, en- enhance air quality, comma, and respond to the Albina Community's restorative vision. That's a broad enough framework. Because Director Constam's comment, there is some, there is also student safety issues on the, when they're actually do, if they were actually doing the construction while we have students in the school and just the sort of air and noise and the hillside stability. But I'd want to add something in on air quality because that is sort of a key issue that's not going away and it's likely to get worse.
Okay. So, yeah, so as it stands, I just want to make sure we're reading everything aloud here so that people watching can follow. So, so the bullet would be, PPS will advocate for revisions to ODOT's I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project Plans to Protect Student Safety, comma, Enhance Air Quality, comma, and Respond to the Albina Community's Restorative Vision. I don't have any objections there. Does, do, do any of the either committee or board members?
I think that sounds like it may be just because it's standing alone as a clause, but I think that sounds like we have a legislative priority of enhancing air quality on its own, which I think is a bit far afield from our mission. I don't think it, it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound like it's referring to. I, I mean, I'm fine with student safety and I just think we should be careful that we're not getting overreaching here because when things get diluted, they lose value, in my opinion.
Well, the, the student safety piece, they both relate to Harriet Tubman's Middle School. So we could just be pretty explicit.
It could be directed throughout the school.
Right.
And in all the meetings that you and I have been in, Julia, you know, that's been our, sorry, Director Brim Edwards, that's been our main point, which is, you know, making sure that the students and community around Harriet Tubman Middle School are safe and healthy. And that has been an ongoing challenge to, you know, get them to respond to any of our requests over time. So being direct about which, what school we're talking about, I think makes sense and won't be a surprise.
I like that too. And I like the focus on air quality, but with the freeway, it's hard to, to put bounds around it. I also, I, I don't know if pile driving is going to be happening. I know there's going to be some soil stabilization probably. But if there's any pile driving, it would be great to look, look at the hours at which those are, that's happening. It's very disruptive on, on so many endocrine and other body systems.
So can I just, just a copy edit? This might respond to Director Constam's concerns. So plans to protect student safety, comma, including improved air quality, comma, and respond to albina, the albina community's restorative vision. That kind of clarifies that we're talking, we're sort of delimiting the air quality issue to the Tubman area.
That works for me.
I'm sorry, Rita, would you mind just reading that again?
Um, I, I'm just suggesting basically putting in including before the air quality thing.
That sounds good.
Including improved or enhanced air quality.
Okay. So it sounds like we've got consensus on that bullet. Any other comments there? So again, funding number will get more background, childcare, a little more clarity. I think we've got consensus here. I do have, I do have one and I'll go ahead and say it out loud and see if I can drop it into the document as well. Give me just, wow, I've got a lot of screens open. So as I was going through this one final time, and I apologize that I didn't get it around earlier. Down under the school reopening, I realized we didn't have anything really about schools reopening. So I can folks see that? The, so I'm suggesting a bullet that says, PPS supports and will advocate for all legislative, let's just say legislative measures. PPS supports and will advocate for legislative measures that help get children back into the classroom as soon as it is safe to do so. And I, I think that's a pretty broad statement. The, the variable of safe. I think, you know, obviously there's a lot of different definitions around that. So there'd be some conversations. But I, I felt like it's important for the district to state that getting students back in school is a legislative priority. And whether that's additional funding from the state for PPE, whether it's getting teachers higher up on the vaccine list, whether it's, you know, getting funding from the state or federal government for space that might help us, you know, reopen more quickly, that, that it felt like a value that was worth stating in our legislative agenda.
So I, I agree. I would change, swap in students for children. And then I would put it at the top. When we lead with liability protections, that's such an adult centered, and I'm not dismissing it, but it's an adult centered like focus versus the, the bullet point that you just offered. And that, I'm just a general question. The, is there a particular reason why some words are bolded?
I think I was trying to highlight the topic and then I didn't, I wasn't consistent. So no, there's not. And I will change it.
I completely agree that that should be in there. And Julia, I agree that we don't want to lead with liability. But I completely agree that we kind of, we kind of buried the lead or missed the lead.
Great. Other thoughts or comments? On that? Okay. Other thoughts or comments overall on the legislative agenda?
So I added, under the funding, I, I put in some language around CSL that we could, I mean, use either in addition to an actual number or instead of an actual number. Around revising.
Rita, we're going to put, you know, we're going to put this on your tombstone.
Well.
Current service level is a lie.
It is.
Can I, can I just ask?
I do not disagree.
This is a little bit of an ignorant question. Is there currently a formula? Or is this something that state economists or the Oregon Department of Education sort of, sort of, sort of craft themselves? Is there actually a formula in statute?
I don't believe there is. It's a.
I, I think it's, yeah, I don't think it's a statutory formula. I think it's, okay, maybe it's not a legislative fix. Maybe it's.
Well, the, the reason why I raise it, because this is a, this is an endemic issue in, in public sector budgeting. And I, I guess what I'm, what I'm worried about is, is, so it just, so the city of Portland, right? Had the same argument that, that, and I was the bad guy there, where we would come out with current service levels every year. And our bureaus would say, what are you talking about? I can't do the same service. So after hearing that for a number of years, we just changed it and called it current appropriation level. So the numbers didn't change, right? But we just changed the, the, the wording around it, which was more accurate because it, it wasn't a current service level. It was simply what you're going to get. And I just, I, I wonder, I, I wonder if this is really the key. I mean, the, really the key issue here is, is can we set these formulas so that we actually get enough to provide the same level of service? I, I think to, to be really blunt, you're going to get a lot of pushback because some people are going to look and say, well, the only reason why it's not a current service level for PPS is because your cost structure is too high. We could then go back and say, well, no, it's because we have more expensive students or other things, right, that play into that. But it gets it into a pretty weedy conversation pretty quickly.
Okay. So can I just mention, I mean, I don't disagree with anything you said. But it's, this is not unique to PPS. There are quite a few school districts that run into this every year or every biennium. And it has been a pretty significant topic of conversation within OSBA. It's one of those things that is, you know, when they're talking about the legislative agenda for OSBA, it's, it's typically not written as a bullet point, but it's always in the explanatory materials. So, and this has been, as, as I understand it, the last couple of years, this has been an actual thing. Like there's been actual discussions.
Yeah, that is, that is helpful background. I have no opposition to this language. So at all, I think it's, 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 yeah, no, it's, it's fine. And that's useful background.
I wonder if we should collapse the bullets? Does it make sense to collapse those two bullets since they're really closely related? And, and say, this is the number we're going to advocate for after we, of course, get the data and the rationale behind it and make sure we're good with it. And then add, you know, and, and Rita's language about the CSL, which you're right, it's an administrative problem, problem, but it's a pretty public one these days. And it's been that way for the last few bienniums.
Okay. Good. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. We are coming up on time and, and I, two things, I want to make sure that we're not going to lose any committee members. But we also have someone who signed up for public testimony, that I want to make sure that there's an opportunity for that before going over too much. And we have one more item, which is to adopt the OSBA. I don't even know what we call it, the, their legislative policies. So any other final comments on this? And there will be an opportunity at the board for the entire board to have a conversation. And again, if, if any final changes need to be made. But anything else before we take action here?
Hey, I have one quick question and I can bring it up with the full board, but we might get a little head start here, which is that we have in the past talked about thinking about some kind of legislative activism around the arbitration process, similar to sort of what we did with the Whitehurst Recommendations and TSPC reform. And I, I apologize, I wasn't tracking how, when exactly this legislative agenda was coming to the full board. So it would have been helpful to do this before. But did you guys have any, any discussion on that?
I don't believe that came up in our prior conversations. I guess what I would say, Amy, is if there is some, go ahead, Courtney.
We're probably going to say this, there is a bullet on welcoming safe learning environments about continued refinements to sexual misconduct statutes. We could put it, it could be couched there.
Okay, I've reached out to Sharon and Liz for their perspectives on, on this and specifically what, what shape legislative advocacy might take. So I'll, I'll let you guys know what I learned and then we can bring it up before the full board. I'm sorry I didn't do that before. And then I have one other late coming thing, which is that I was just approached, recently approached and did not meet with until this week, the Classroom Law Project, who is bringing a bill forward around civics education. And they would like our support and probably ideally like it to be part of our legislative advocacy agenda. There's a bill that Representative Evans from Monmouth introduced that failed last year. They want to resurrect it. It's got a lot of support. And it's, you know, OSBA doesn't love it because it's, it could be perceived as an unfunded mandate, but it's really no different than what has led to like the ethnic studies law, the Native American Student Success Law, the African American Student Success Law. So they're gonna, I'm going to get some materials from them within the next day or so, and I'll forward it on. And if, if there's interest, maybe we can somehow show them that we will lend our support as well.
Great. So why don't, yeah, both of those, Amy, why don't you bring, bring those to the board conversation? We'll have that there. And then that reminded me, did we, did we go ahead and we deleted the bullet on the unfunded mandates? Okay.
I did. I'm sorry. I didn't get everybody's thumbs up. I assumed with the no comment meant it was okay.
I, I'm okay with that. I mean, I think we, we should oppose a lot of unfunded mandates, but I think that it, there, it is true, we won't oppose them all. So I think a blanket statement isn't accurate. And, and I'll also be honest, that, that doesn't actually have any sway with, with state or federal legislators for that matter. So it's a little bit like hitting your head against the wall. I think we'll be better off on very specific things, sort of, sort of arguing on that point. Okay, with that.
It's also included as part of the OSBA legislative priorities. So sort of, we're already doing it through OSBA.
Okay. Well, so that, that leads me to ask a question is like, is there a reason why we are adopting OSBA's agenda? I mean, it seems like we don't have any ability to amend it. I mean, can we just accept it and say that there's going to be, there's going to be alignment on some things, but.
Julia, I'm going to ask you to hold that question for just a couple of minutes because what I'd like to do is go ahead and take act, I'd like to take action on this on our legislative agenda. Then I'd like to let our member of the public testify since she's been waiting. And we're supposed to be done by six.
I believe Anne, Nathaniel has a question.
Okay, great. Nathaniel.
Yeah, just going back to the agenda. As I said in the past, I was interested in seeing something climate related on the agenda in some, in one form or another. And I don't believe that was added. I'm just wondering about that.
I, Nathaniel, I didn't, I didn't ignore your email about this. There, I don't know what those bills are right now. If we wanted to make a broad statement about climate justice or, you know, climate related, you know, we could talk about the wordsmith thing. We could do that. The other reminder is that this, and I'm not trying to diminish your interest. This is a hot topic and it's obviously very important. There's also a nod at the top of the agenda to other things that could come up. This is not an exhaustive list. It's not meant to be. There are going to be things that pop up throughout the session that maybe we weren't aware of in the beginning that we can still, you know, as a board, you can still support and we can still advocate for as a district that might just not specifically be called out in an agenda. So this is, you know, one of those things where it's, we can't, we have to eventually like draw the, you know, put the nail in and say, this is done. And then things will. And then things will come up, and we'll, you know, if it's important, I'll bring it forward to you. If it's something that is just pretty run-of-the-mill, I usually do that with, you know, my supervisor or something, without bringing it to the full board. So it's up to the board, but I just wanted to remind you that there are ways to couch it without, because there's not a climate bill this time that we know of that's coming forward.
So let me make this suggestion. Courtney, if you could work with Nathaniel on maybe a general statement, because we do have some general statements in here, and I think that one is consistent with the board and the district's position, that, you know, we will support legislation, you know, for climate justice, something along those lines. Let's bring that to the full board conversation at the full board meeting, and talk about if we want to add that in. Nathaniel, does that work for you?
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like, so what I'm gonna ask is that we go ahead and formally vote to move this to full board consideration. We've got a couple of things that Amy is gonna look at. Language on, we've got the climate-related one. And then we'll have that full board conversation. Does that work? Great. And someone remind me, do we do motions in our committees to move things forward? So, great, can I get a motion on the legislative agenda?
It's moved. Second.
And then, any final discussion? Okay, all those in favor of recommending this legislative agenda to the full board for approval, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Anyone opposed? Okay, and any abstentions? And do our student representatives get a vote in committee? I'm seeing a nod, so, and is that, I think it's our formal student representatives, right? Which, remind me again, I think it's DeBai and Parker and Tay, right, are the three?
There's also Jaya, who is absent currently.
Okay, great. So, student representatives, do you want to go ahead and cast your vote as well?
Yes.
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 Great. Okay, thank you. So we will send that forward. If it's okay with everyone, I'd like to just deviate for a minute from the agenda. And we do have someone who signed up to testify to the committee, and I would like to shift over towards that.
We have Jessica Colby, and I just added her as a panelist.
Great, thank you. Thanks for joining us, Jessica. Thanks for waiting through that meeting. And I believe we have, you will have three minutes to testify.
Great, thank you. I've waited through many a meeting, so, you know, we're good. Hi, my name is Jessica Colby, J-E-S-S-I-C-A-C-O-L-B-Y, she/her pronouns. First of all, heartfelt thanks to all of you, board, superintendent, everyone, employee, teacher, who's working to support the kids in the pandemic. I know it's a huge lift, and it's appreciated. Okay, so I'm here today because of an issue I've been quietly hearing about in TAGAC, the Talented and Gifted Advisory Council, for years. And then, as I've been working with the PPS dyslexia parent group, which, and this has become an insistent voice across multiple groups that I'm seeing now. Teaching programs are failing to adequately prepare teachers to support students with best practices across multiple disciplines, from the needs of students of color to literacy to special education and more. And I'm here to call out this pressing need, which has been increasingly evident and requires your leadership. I know that efforts have been made, and even legislation passed, in an attempt to align teaching program curriculum with the needs of schools across Oregon. These efforts, sadly, have not been particularly effective. But that was then. In this current social and political climate, there is, I believe, an opportunity to push for more inclusive curricula in teaching programs that support BIPOC students, struggling readers, Tagintui students, and special education students. And all the other people, all the other kids, not on my radar, not in my bubble, all of that, with greater success. We have more and more parents, community members, and educators who see this as a key issue in supporting students. We have a board, superintendent, and administration who understand the need for educating educators and are actively working to plug the holes left by teaching program curricula. And we have a moment in the political and social climate that should be utilized before complacency yet again sets in. So what's my ask? That PPS take up this cause, developing advocacy and providing leadership in bringing teaching programs, ODE, and the Oregon Legislature up to date with the trainings that teachers need in today's classrooms. That PPS bring parent groups, including dyslexia literacy advocates, special education advisory council, BIPOC groups, talented and gifted advisory council, educators, and anyone else that I am not thinking of, to share the firsthand understanding of the support students need that they are not getting, and what teaching programs need to do to prepare teachers to support those needs, instead of playing catch-up while already teaching. I ask the PPS work with these groups to decide priorities and the realities of what can be accomplished. And I ask it's become a priority for legislative action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the testimony. Appreciate that. Okay, so the last thing on our agenda is is the Oregon School Board Association Legislative Agenda adoption. Courtney, can you go ahead and give us a little overview? Is this something that OSBA asks local districts to do? Is it something we have done in the past? And a little bit about what's in there.
Yeah, yes, we have done this in the past. It's pretty much a formality. And Roseanne brought this to me and said, "Do we have time to do this?" So I actually don't know very much of the history about how this has come before. Maybe Roseanne, I mean, I'm assuming OSBA just reached out to you asking for us to do it, because everybody's doing it.
Yes. So, hi, thank you. So, last, the meeting before last, you voted for the board members on the OSBA board. I think there were two positions. And when I went to go put in our final election tallies, I noted there was this item that was supposed to be voted on, that they asked school districts to give them a signal that you approve it by December 16th. And so, like Courtney said, it's somewhat of a formality. I don't think OSBA would not go ahead and use this as their platform, but they do ask that you review it and signal your vote on it.
So can I-
Or we can report your vote.
They're asking member districts to ratify-
Correct. Thanks.
And it was developed, it was developed through the Legislative Policy Committee of OSBA and the OSBA board over the last, like, year. So they, yes, it matters because they want to be able to say, you know, this is, this is the agenda for the organization that has been ratified by, you know, whatever percent of the member boards.
So having, my preference would be that we do something more like accept and acknowledge versus ratify. Having worked in Salem, you know, I think they have, like, a majority of districts, so this is what the organization's board has approved. I don't know whether we, PPS ratifying it makes a substantial difference to legislators of whether they, you know, support or oppose things on this agenda. I'm just not comfortable just adopting their proposals. And I did say, in my previous tenure on the board, I was elected member of the Oregon School Boards Association Board. And I'll just say, the local government, governments often gets, and local control often gets used, as referenced earlier in the meeting, as a reason not to do, to, like, "We're gonna establish your own community norms." And that could be, like, "We don't think students should have a world language" as a graduation requirement, or any whole host of things. So I, personally, I'm not, I'm not comfortable just adopting it as a, they've asked us, this is a formality, because if we adopted it, it means that we're adopting it. So I'd rather accept and acknowledge, or something to that effect.
I'm making a counterargument. Can I make a comment, and then Rita ask for your take? Because I think you still serve on the Legislative and Policy Committee, and I used to sit on that committee. And the main work of that committee is to formulate the legislative agenda on behalf of all the member districts. And, and, and all the member districts vote on representatives to the Legislative and Policy Committee. So I think, you know, if there were actual items on their legislative agenda that the majority of our board vehemently disagreed with, then I think it would be reasonable to object to their legislative agenda and to not ratify it. But in the absence of that, I do think it's really important to ratify it, because they get their juice from being able to say, "This represents our member districts." And we elect people, both from our, in our case, from our own board, not every board has a representative on the Legislative and Policy Committee, but we elect people from the state to craft this agenda, and it's supposed to be an iterative process. And in my experience, it generally has been. And so that's where we ended up where we are. And I think that if we aren't interested in, if we, as a collective, aren't interested in sort of signing on to the overall priorities of the organization, then we should rethink our entire membership with the organization, because they expect that of us. And our place for input is in the crafting of the legislative agenda, and it's my understanding that we've had that. So I'm teeing you up right now, Rita.
Thank you, yes. So, while it is almost certainly true that OSBA, the OSBA agenda would have our, the absence of our ratification would have minimal effect on the, the ability of OSBA to effectively advocate for its agenda. That's probably true. But I think the issue at hand is, is less about the legislature and more about our relationship with OSBA. And I would say, so I've been, I've been part of the Legislative Policy Committee for the last three years. And just in the last three years, I have seen enormous change. I think it's an organization that is very much in transition. And it is, it is really trying, as an organization, to understand and embrace the concept of racial equity. If you've read it, there's a preamble to the, to the agenda. And I can tell you that represents months' worth of advocacy. There is a new caucus for board members of color that has become a real force within the organization. And it would be, I think, counterproductive for PPS at this point when OSBA is actually at an inflection point. I think it would be very short-sighted and counterproductive for PPS to indicate a diminution in its support of the organization. So on that basis, I would strongly recommend that we ratify this agenda.
Can I ask if there's a middle ground here? What I, I'm curious whether the ratification versus accepting or acknowledging is an important distinction? Because I actually appreciate this conversation, because I'm seeing some really valid points on both sides of this. And I'm just wondering if there's a middle ground there of acknowledging and even accepting, right? Sort of that this is OSBA's legislative agenda without formally ratifying it? If that's, if that is sort of a middle ground that gets support from everyone?
Would it help if I read to you the ballot we're supposed to fill out?
Oh, sure.
Because I think ratification is my word, not the official word.
The ballot says, "The resolution to adopt the proposed 2021-2022 OSBA legislative priorities and principles." And the choices are to, yes, adopt, no, do not adopt, abstain, or do not take action.
What about the write-in vote?
It's a very small line. Just kidding.
I mean, the reality is, it's not gonna make a damn bit of a difference to what OSBA does, whether we're in or not. It will make a difference in how OSBA responds to, you know, advocacy from me or anybody else from PPS. This, for better or worse, this is the organization that represents school boards in the state. And if we want to improve, we need to play ball.
I agree, Rita, and I agree with what you said about how the organization has been evolving, both the initiative to evolve and the actual evolution and commitment of the people that are centrally leading the organization right now. And I also feel like if we are not going to adopt this, their legislative agenda, or, yeah, accept it, then we need to have a good reason. We need to stand on principle and say, "These are the aspects of this that we object to." Because it is going to be meaningful to them. And it's just, I don't, I don't see, I don't see why we would. And if there is a good reason why we would, then we need to be able to articulate that and collectively stand by it to them.
I guess I never look at something when you're adopting a legislative agenda as, like, a formality or a courtesy. I mean, to me, for it to mean something, you're actually supportive of the entire agenda. So maybe the sort of short circuit is that we're just getting this and it's being, this is a formality. But when I'm talking to legislators, I don't want them to point to something like, "Hey, what you guys adopted, you know, you adopted, you adopted the OSBA agenda, and here's their point of view." I'm just gonna go back to Senator Dembrow's comments about some of the tensions we may see in in the policies agendas that are put, that we put forward that may be in conflict with OSBA's.
I think there's plenty of room for us to have a legislative agenda that is different and beyond theirs. And I completely agree. We don't owe them a courtesy. But if we are not, if we are going to divorce ourselves from the organization in a significant way and not adopt this, we need to have a reason. And we need to have a majority of our board that says, "I don't feel comfortable standing by these aspects of the platform." So I guess my last two cents on this would be to ask every board member, before this comes up for our vote, to review this document carefully and make sure that each one of us feels comfortable with this agenda that has been put together by our board colleague and the other elected officers of the Legislative and Policy Committee. And each of us just vote our own conscience about the content of the platform.
And I'll make one last comment. So, as you well know, Julia, when you're a member of a coalition, you don't always agree 100% with everything that the coalition advocates for. But you're stronger together. And as long as there's nothing that you cannot live with, then there are reasons to, to, to accept a coalition agenda, even if it's not everything you would ever wish for. And I would say, it is important right now to support OSBA's evolution, because if you're really serious about advocating for equity throughout the state, Because if you're really serious about advocating for equity throughout the state, OSBA is your partner. It is actually trying to, it's, it's trying to educate school board members across the state. If you, if you want to get the outcome that you want, one of the ways to do it is to support OSBA as it works to evolve itself and educate others. So I mean, if, if there's a, you know, a few things on here that I might not be, you know, over the moon about, I'm willing to, I'm willing to accept them because the, the potential benefit far outweighs the potential cost of associating ourselves with this agenda.
Well, I don't see an acceptance or acknowledgement of the agenda as any way of saying that you're not serious about racial equity across the state. Again, having worked in the legislative process, I think that generally, people know who OSBA is. They're not going to go down and look at the individual list of what members did and what with regard to the agenda. And I don't think, I think PPS has a long established relationship with OSBA, as do individual members. I don't, I don't see an impact. Can I finish my statement, Director Moore? What I was going to suggest is that perhaps on our legislative agenda, if the chair is amenable, that we indicate or add a phrase on our agenda that if there's a conflict between our agenda and any other policy agenda that we, you know, adopt, that the PPS agenda is the sort of governing one. Because I'm concerned that we're adopting two different, we just had a conversation about the PPS one, and now we're going to adopt a legislative agenda that has something else in it. So if ours could be the penultimate one, to me, that seems as a reasonable way, way to address the potential inherent conflicts.
Chair Scott, can I ask a question? I, I can understand why some reluctance to adopt two agendas. But I wonder if Courtney, and I'm going to put you on the spot, Courtney, and I know we're over time. But I wonder if we can be, somehow be clear that when we sign on to bills or initiatives or coalitions in the legislature, it's for what's on that page, but that doesn't, that doesn't make us sign on to every OSB, OSBA position. There will definitely be times where, I've heard you say, Courtney, we have to step away, like, we don't agree. Let OSBA fight that one. PPS is not on the, on the coalition for it. So I'm wondering if just being able to say that out loud helps you all think through, like, because we're signing on to a principled agenda, does not mean we support every legislative issue they support. I just add, I'm just sharing that from perspective.
We don't go arm in arm with them on every issue. It's, we've, you know, we, we have definitely some that we worked really close, we've worked really closely on, and they're a good partner and a good, I have good colleagues that I work with regularly. They were very helpful with the, with the sexual misconduct sort of Whitehurst work. And I thought it was invaluable. So I agree, I see what Julia is saying, but I, I don't think it's saying that we're going to, you know, knock down doors figuratively, since it's probably going to be virtual, to, you know, to share the gospel of OSBA. I think it's more about a partnership. And we can be vocal that we don't agree on every item.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I know, I really did appreciate that conversation. I do think, I do think the arguments about both the relationship with OSBA and the fact that I, I don't actually see anything in here that's, that's, that's offensive or that I would change. I think, I think, Julia, you're right, there are, there are things in there that, that could be used the wrong way. But, but I actually think Rita's point about, you know, and I'm thinking specifically about the unfilled mandate. The rest of it seems, seems pretty innocuous. But I also think the fact that OSBA, you know, has come along as an organization. And I think if that does become an issue where they're opposing some sort of mandate from the state legislature that we feel in support of, I think that's a moment for us to speak out specifically, you know, at that time. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that this committee recommended the full board adoption of the OSBA legislative agenda.
So moved.
Actually, I moved it. Do you want to second it?
I'll second, okay.
Any further board conversation about this? And I think the point that was made about actually making sure as, when it comes to the full board, that the full board read through it. And, and, you know, just to make sure that we are, you know, comfortable with, with the content is, is going to be important.
So I'm going to abstain coming out of committee just to have an additional round of conversations. It doesn't mean that's where I'm going to land at the, the board vote.
Okay, great. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed and abstentions?
Abstention.
Abstention, okay. And then student representatives?
I'm also abstaining. I haven't reviewed it. I don't know what's on it. Just lack of information.
Thanks, Parker. Tavai? You might have lost.
Yeah, I haven't gone over it yet either.
Okay, great. So a couple of abstentions.
Hey, Andrew, can I just chime in here real quick? Parker and Tavai and whomever else, when you review it, you might want to think about making some suggestions that we might make to them about incorporating student voice in their process of developing an advocacy strategy. And it's a bigger issue for the organization too, because generally speaking, I think they don't, they don't do a very good job of that at all. So that's something that you guys might think about, because you have student reps in other districts as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and something that I wanted to bring up, and I think Nathaniel was interested in, was a sort of intergovernmental related, was having some relationship with, with other student councils statewide. But that's, that's for another meeting. Just wanted to sort of bring that, I guess, give a heads up. But thank you, Amy. And yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll read it with that, that lens.
Okay, thank you. That was our last agenda item. I wanted to just flag, I know we're well over time, but future meetings actually have gotten, I just wanted to sort of put them on the record. I did, I have had some, some board conversations, and actually, we're addressing some of them, even with our action tonight. I know Scott had asked whether the committee could discuss the air quality standards and potentially asking ODOT, or maybe it was DEQ, to do air quality study at all of our schools. So I'm going to put that on a future agenda to see if that's something that, that, that we want to advocate for. There was also some conversations about looking at future housing projections and population projections and getting some information from the city of Portland. We're going to, we're going to explore that offline to see if we can knock that information loose. But if not, this, we might come back to this committee for formal action. I did get a request to, about whether the district wants to make a statement overall about teacher vaccines. So I don't think we have time to discuss that today, but I do potentially want to put it on a future agenda. Or maybe if it's more urgent, it might come straight to the board. But the question whether, whether we as a board want to make an official, pass an official resolution urging teachers to be high up in terms of the overall vaccine protocols. And I think we will need a little more information on that because they are high up. But I think the question is whether we want them to be higher. By the way, New York Times has a, where are you in the vaccine line tool? Which is just really fascinating. I am absolutely like, like 600,000th of Multnomah County. I mean, I didn't even realize there were that many people in Multnomah County, but I am, I'm at the end of the line. But it's a really, you sort of put in your, your different metrics and it shows you where you are in the vaccine line. And teachers are relatively high up. And so I think there's an interesting question there about, about what, what more. And then actually CSL and Budget Development, which I think, again, we're discussing a little bit. And then our student representatives did bring forward the idea of talking, this is more of a future elections issue, but the idea of potentially expanding elections to include 16-year-olds, 16 and 17-year-olds, not just 16-year-olds. So that is an issue that also may come back as part of our election conversation moving forward. So I just wanted to flag those things that I know. More to come. Other, any other business or things that people want to flag? I know we're well, well over time. Okay, thanks for a very productive meeting. I apologize that we went long. But we, I think we got a lot done tonight, so. Appreciate it. Committee is adjourned. Thanks.